Hi. I almost had a panic attack, but I'm okay.
Okay.
Oh, did somebody tell you?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I did have a panic attack, but I'm good. Thank you, Justin. You're the best.
Lisa, could you hear me? Mike Brennan.
Yeah, I got you.
Can't hear you too well. Let's hear.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there we go.
Okay.
Volume is a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
Lisa, I'm just, Lisa, I'm looking at the, uh, the agenda. I don't see our Rex on the agenda. Are they on here? Or I printed out the wrong one, maybe?
No, they're on there.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Um. What did I do? Yeah, there they are. Yeah, for July 6th.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Are you talking about the application 33s? The two big ones?
I'm looking at the agenda, the two-page agenda.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see.
Number 11 and 12.
Oh, didn't print out. Okay. My fault. I printed out the agenda. I missed the last page. Sorry.
There's two pages.
Yeah, mine got kind of, I got printed over. So, I don't know what happened when I printed. Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm beating my little printer to death at home here.
I know. I see a couple callers. Is that, um, Jerry? I see Jerry and Bob.
Pete McIntyre still.
I'm Pete.
You work correct. I'm here, Bob.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Steve.
I can, Steve June?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you, Steve.
Okay.
Yep, Steve Jeskowicz online.
Hi, Steve.
Okay, it is 5 o'clock. I'll go ahead. Lisa, how many people have logged on?
Um, of the commission, I have four. I have Bob, yourself, Pete, and Jerry.
Okay.
Any other committee members out there?
That's four. That's a quorum. So we'll give another couple minutes here. I do expect ONG dial in, Silver Petroselli, others.
They're all here. Mike and Dan and Steve June are on.
All right, Steve June and Mike Brennan. Great.
Yeah.
How about Dan?
Dan's here.
Super. Welcome, everyone.
I, I have a request.
Yes.
Um, what are the chances of us ending by around 6 o'clock?
I think we can support that.
Okay. My nephew is in the championship game, and it starts at 6:00 in East Line.
All right.
For baseball.
We will be very efficient tonight.
I missed the 1 o'clock. They had to win to get to the championship, and my sister-in-law kept texting me.
All right, we will, we will, we will be, we will make sure you make it.
Chop, chop.
The faster we finish this meeting, the faster I can throw some stakes on the grill.
There you go. See? So we both have incentives.
Okay, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, the 6th of July. This is a regular meeting, a remote, uh, meeting through WebEx of the Town of Ledger Permanent Municipal Building Committee. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call. Um, this is Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
Pete McIntyre, Vice Chair.
Bob Guerrier, Board of Ed.
Okay. Jerry was here.
Jerry, you still with us?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Jerry, you back? Okay, we'll continue on. Non-board, uh, other personnel that are on the line, go ahead and try them in.
Mike Brennan, ONG.
Hey.
Dan Hessler, ONG.
Steven June, Silver Petroselli.
Oh, I see Jerry. Jerry's back.
I'm back.
Hey, Jerry, we're doing roll call. Uh, state your name.
Uh, Jerry Tumisky, a member.
Great. Uh, and I thought I heard Dan in there in the background. Uh, how about Wayne Donaldson?
I don't see Wayne.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. We have a quorum, um, and, uh, meeting is called to order as far as, uh, we've done our roll call, moving on to, um, informational items. Uh, I have, excuse me, citizen comments, uh, well, I missed another one. Let me properly scroll here. Approval of the minutes, okay? The minutes for our special meeting of 22 June are posted. Um, those minutes to me appear to be in order. The entertained motions to approve the minutes for 22 June.
Uh, Pete McIntyre moved to approve the minutes of 22 June, uh, 2020 as written.
Okay, minutes have been, uh, moved for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Tumisky. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, signified by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, eye.
Pete McIntyre, eye.
Jerry Tumisky, eye.
Bob Guerrier, eye.
Hey, the eyes have it. All right, moving on. Uh, we have no, uh, citizens online to my knowledge, however, I'll wait 30 seconds. If anyone has dialed in and you're a citizen of Ledger would like to speak, uh, please state your name and your address and address the committee. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to informational items. I do have only one informational item, and that is, I'd like to let the committee know that, um, uh, Mike Brennan, uh, is in our last meeting with us, most likely. Uh, Mike is going to be retiring, uh, from ONG, and, uh, we wish him the best in his retirement. Uh, some of you are aware of that, but for those of you that are not, Mike's been involved in this project for over five years, and, uh, we, uh, he's done a great job with us, so thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Steve.
Congratulations.
So we're going to, congratulations, Mike. Uh, we're going to move on to the agenda items, uh, and the, uh, first item, we, we got a couple things here, and Wayne, uh, Wayne, are you online by chance?
Yes, I'm on.
All right, uh, Wayne, the first two motions are for, uh, this is for Environmental Systems Corporation to do some installations. Can you give a quick update to the committee on how we got here? Uh, these were originally requested to be done through the, uh, contract through D'Agostino, and now we're looking at doing it outside that contract and doing it with, uh, state contractor. Uh, can you give us some quick update on these two items?
Yeah, it's still through D'Agostino, uh, but it's just a different contractor from Ad Tech because of all the problems we had with, um, you know, their partially installing stuff, trying to get them back to finish up work and stuff. They're basically, one is, um, the middle school media center has a situation where the, uh, there's a smart board, a touchboard, uh, but there's no audio to it. So they never put any audio on this. Sorry about that. Um, they never put any audio to it. So that is to tie in the existing, um, part of the existing speakers in the media center, the ones that, where the kids would sit, face that smart board, uh, to, uh, be able to hear the audio coming off the, uh, whatever's being presented on the smart board. The second one, go ahead. You got any questions on that one?
Uh, I, I am not. I'm just trying to give the committee a speed. Uh, the second one is actually the first one, but keep going.
Okay, the other one is for the, um, Gallup Hill Media Center, uh, which the superintendent had requested, I guess, that we install a, um, video presentation system in similar to the other, uh, the other school. Uh, so that is to add the video presentation system into the media center at Gallup Hill. And again, they're, they're both state vendors. They're both through D'Agostino. Uh, it's just a change from Ad Tech because of the problems we had with them.
All right, did we actually already, uh, release this work to Ad Tech to do it?
No, we had gotten a quote, um, and they wouldn't come back and, and fix the, lower the projector in the gym at, uh, Gallup Hill where they put it up behind the, uh, basketball hoop. Um, we couldn't get them in to finish the projector, the screen at the middle school or at the Gallup Hill in the cafeteria, and then we had some issues with the, uh, control panel on the, the thing they put in at, uh, LMS, um, and again, it took forever to get them back to, to correct their work.
Okay, uh, just one thing, Wayne, I did take a look at the equipment that they're installing out of these two. Uh, first item is on, on, on item number one, Lisa, under Roman numeral 7, 1, that should be 12 for 2019, not 2020. But, um, I did notice that all the, the, the parts for this, uh, you know, cost about $6,000 for the first one out of a $17,000.
Mm-hmm.
That does seem like an awful lot of labor for this work.
Steve. Steve, this is Steve from Silver Petroselli. Um, I did have Nick D'Agostino review both of these, and, uh, he was fine with both change orders. Uh, he did say that, uh, ESC was a good group to work with, uh, and that they are a strong company.
All right, now the other question I have for you, Wayne, is on the first one, it talks about the ceiling being, uh, where they put this, uh, screen in, that the ceiling work would be done by the school, and that the electrical work is being done outside this contract to ensure that there's power to the projector and the screen. Has that already been done, the power?
Uh, that I'd have to check with Mike. That would have been, uh, that would be something Ferguson would do, or I can't have, you know, our guys do it. It's, that's not, there's nothing huge there. It's 7.10. There's no high voltage or anything, so.
Well, the, the only reason I ask that, Wayne, is, well, first of all, Mike, whoever can mute, please mute, but, uh, Mike Brennan, do you know if this, uh, power's already been run for this in the media center?
I, I, I'd have to check, Steve. There's, I really'd have to check.
All right. Uh, Wayne, I guess my other question is on, on the, uh, on these speakers and this projector, is this something your guys are capable of just buying and installing?
Um, I'd have to look into it. I can't look into it.
Uh, the only reason I say that is it does, it is over, it's like $10,000 worth of labor as a minimum here, and it doesn't look like there's a lot of work involved to install a projector and a screen.
Yeah. No, I can, I'm more than willing to take a look at it and, uh, uh, I'll get quotes on what the equipment they expect and, uh, see what's involved in the install.
Okay, uh, the same thing with speakers. It looks to me like these are just speakers and some wire that need to be installed in the ceiling. Um, and the only reason I ask that also is I want to make sure that the power is already here because if we lease this, uh, release this, they come to do the install and that plug during there, plug it in.
Right.
We could find ourselves waiting for that. So if you can check on those two items.
Yes, I will.
And, uh, we'll have them approved and done before school starts.
I'm more le, wary of the, um, middle school speakers because they would, uh, they have to be tied into the, be cut out if the PA system comes on for the fire alarm and stuff.
Okay, understand.
Yeah, I'd be more concerned on those than, than the, uh, Gallup Hill.
Okay, well, we can separate the two. There's no power needed for the speakers. Those are, um, coming off the existing system. So with that, then, uh, that, that, that one I'm not too worried about. So we can go ahead and move forward on that. So, uh, I move that we accept the Environmental Systems Corporation, uh, proposal, the amount of $3,646.79 to, uh, install speakers in the middle school media center. Do I have a second? Somebody needs to mute.
Somebody's, yeah.
I can, this is Kate. I can second.
Okay, uh, Kate, welcome. All right, please let the meeting know that Kate's online.
Kate's.
Kate's seconded that. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the, uh, proposal from ESC for speakers in the middle school media center, signified by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, eye.
Pete McIntyre, eye.
Jerry Tumisky, eye.
Tomma Herb, eye.
Bob Guerrier, eye.
We got the eyes out. Somebody needs to mute.
Yeah.
Do we know who's doing it, Lisa?
I, I can't tell. Oh, there, okay, now it's better. Now it's gone.
Yeah, that was me. I'm sorry.
All right, we're good. All right. Uh, moving on, now we have the discussion of possible action on the Ledger Middle School Improvement Project.
Okay, I'm sorry, Steve, because I couldn't hear. Did you ta, what did you do to the first, um, the, the proposal for the Gallup Hill?
Uh, the Gallup Hill one, we're going to table the next meeting.
Table. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, we're on to a general discussion on the school improvement project. Uh, had a phone meeting today with, uh, Mike Brennan from, uh, ONG to kind of go over where we are with getting towards closeout. Uh, there is a punch list that was sent back to Wayne today, uh, that they're going to go through together and sort out, uh, what's remaining there. But we are down to the last items really of the schools here. Although the list may have over 100 items on it, many of them are just door items and things. Uh, substantial items of concern that I want to bring up at this point are really two items. One is the floor in the middle school gym to ensure that we know what our plan is moving forward, if there needs to be a plan and any work done. And number two would be the HVAC, uh, resolution for the four classrooms in Gallup Hill. The rest of the items on that list are not significant, and, um, we're down to the last few items. The cost to keep the project open, um, you know, warranty work is one thing. Uh, we have a few last change orders that are being done for a few things here and there, but for the most part, we are, uh, you know, we're wrapping up these projects. We're going to close out some more allowances today. Uh, our goal is a month from now that we are at the point where we have another application for payment from ONG, another cost report. You just got one today. I'll let you guys take a look at, um, independent of this meeting. Um, and then we'll, the goal would be to try to close out the projects by mid-August with a special, uh, closeout at that point. There's only a few hundred thousand dollars left out there, um, for, uh, retained, and the amount of work that still needs to be done is not significant. Uh, so we, we do want to get these projects moved toward closeout. So, uh, we've got some change orders to cover. What I'd like to do is to cover the change orders and cover the, uh, bills we have to pay, and then we'll have a general discussion on the, uh, on the projects. Uh, so, uh, it's not included here, but I do want to bring up the, the middle school, uh, gym floor. Uh, today I asked Mike Brennan to, uh, have a flooring expert come out and meet with Wayne Donaldson at the middle school. I'll come out as well. Uh, let's take a good look at that floor and determine what needs to be done, if anything. I am, I would, if anything has to be done to that floor, I don't want to wait any longer. I want to do it now because getting someone to come back and trying to hold anyone accountable after we close out the project would be next to impossible. If that floor needs to be resealed, we'll order it and have it done over the summer. If it is, uh, not need to be resealed, we'll know. We just need a good flooring expert out there to give us his opinion. So, uh, with that, we're going to go on to item number five, which is, uh, change order, uh, 210 Romeo 1. This is, uh, ONG Industries', uh, closeout of Con Acoustics. It's a negative change order, the amount of $21,920. And, uh, you'll see it attached to your agenda what that entails. Again, we're closing out these allowances. I move that we accept the, uh, change order to close out their allowance. Again, a negative change order, an amount of $21,920.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre. There's any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the change order as written, signified by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, eye.
Pete McIntyre, eye.
Jerry Tumisky, eye.
Kate Topham Herb, eye.
Bob Guerrier, eye.
All right, with that, the eyes have it, and that change order is accepted. Next item we have is change order number 235, uh, issued by ONG Industries. This is, uh, a actual, uh, this is a closeout of a trade allowance for, um, uh, for the windows. It's a, it's a positive change order, meaning, uh, it's costing us an additional $1,732. This is actually through Lockheed, uh, which is our window, uh, contractor for some miscellaneous metal trim and things. Uh, you'll see attached there what needed to be done. Some of this dealt with temporary classrooms and nurses' office, um, but there was, uh, we exceeded our allowance there by $1,732. So with that, I move that we accept the change order.
1763, Steve.
Say again?
1763.
Uh, make sure I got, hold on here. Oh, I forgot to add, uh, ONG's on there. Uh, 1763, yes. Uh, and, uh, so I'm amending that motion to 1763, uh, and I'm looking for a second.
Pete McIntyre, second.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order, signified by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, eye.
Pete McIntyre, eye.
Jerry Tumisky, eye.
Kate Topham Herb, eye.
Bob Guerrier, eye.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it. That, that change order is accepted. Uh, next, we have a closeout of the electrical trade, um, allowance, and this is, uh, change order 255. It's a negative change order of credit against the, against the, uh, GMP of $6,767. It is in order, and I move that we accept the change order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the change order as written, signified by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, eye.
Pete McIntyre, eye.
Jerry Tumisky, eye.
Kate Topham Herb, eye.
Bob Guerrier, eye.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it. The change order is accepted. Moving on to the next item. Uh, now we're going to move into invoices at this point here. Uh, so the first one up is, uh, carryover from our last meeting. Uh, Steve June, were you able to get any more information on Dean's billing for this, uh, is it correct?
Oh, where did Steve go?
Oh, sorry. No, I was not able to, I was not able to. I apologize.
No problem. If, I'm going to go ahead and table that till next meeting then. Um, and, uh, Steve, shoot me an email as soon as you have an answer on that, and we'll make sure it's on the next agenda.
I will do that.
All right. Uh, the next item we have is, can I have a second? Uh, lost my place. All right, now, Pusson O'Neil, we recontracted with Pusson O'Neil to come out to Gallup Hill School for the vermiculite removal. Um, the good news is that that project was done very, very quickly, um, and as a result of that, we, uh, had no problems. The, uh, Pusson O'Neil invoice here, I don't know if this is their final invoice or not. Uh, Wayne, when was that job finished? Was it done before the 1st of June?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. We're right at the 1st of June. Mike?
All right, I don't know if this is the final on this task or not, but it looks pretty, it looks to be close. But this is, uh, for the period ending 30 May. This is our special project for vermiculite removal, um, and invoice 0223269, uh, direct to the town, not through ONG, in the amount of $5,051.80. It is in order, and, uh, I move that we make payment.
Steve, do we?
Second, Steve McIntyre.
Action on what they found?
Uh, well, in this case, it's not, it's what they didn't find. Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, which, what they didn't find was that, that the, uh, the testing afterwards said there was no asbestos, correct?
That's correct, but the state does not recognize that, uh, and. That's correct, but the state does not recognize that and requires vermiculite to be considered asbestos-containing, no matter when, even if you get a negative test. But we did have a test, they found no negative, they found no asbestos.
Right, the negative test means that we didn't get asbestos out into the building.
Correct. Well, both. We also, I also had a test done on the material itself, and they found no asbestos in it. But the state does not recognize that as a valid test.
Right, understand. So in this case, we had to pay this cost to do the work because it was considered to be, the type of work being done required it. So Jerry, the good news is that the after-work testing that was done within the enclosure indicated that they cleaned up well.
Now, I wonder if, if Fuss had given us any documentation saying that.
Well, no, the test results would be, well, their report and everything will state that they didn't find any asbestos, but the goal was to find no asbestos. But if we went back into that wall tomorrow, we'd still have to prove as if it was asbestos.
Correct.
So with that, the motion is on the floor. Was that seconded by anyone?
No.
Say again?
No, wasn't.
All right, I'm waiting for someone to second the motion to pay the invoice.
I'll second.
Okay, that sounded like Jerry Tominski.
Jerry.
And was that Gary Schneider?
No, it was Jerry.
Oh, Jerry, okay. So with that, is there any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor of approving the invoice for $5,051.80, signify by saying your name and aye. Steve just with aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tepama Herb, aye.
Bob Gerber, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, and that invoice is approved. All right, the next two invoices we have are our application number thirty-three. So this is the thirty-third month that ONG has built up. So we've been doing this for about three and a half years, actually, because they didn't build us for the first three months. So the first is for Gallup Hill School. If you open that up and take a look at it attached, you will see that we have only about $100,000 in retainage. And, but it shows balance to finish of $783,000, and that's because there's over half a million dollars in unused contingency money that'll come back. Now, the copy that's attached to your agenda is not signed by Sotifrettracelli, but Steve June did forward to Lisa and I the signed by Steve June copies. So they have been approved. If you drill down into this application for payment, you get a chance to see for each trade how much money is left in balance to finish, as well as the retainage being held against those trades. So if you if you drill down, you'll be able to see where the work is left to be done. In Gallup Hill School in particular, one of the areas I want you to take a peek at if you're looking there is, we still have some money against Action Air and some retainage there. But I want you to keep in mind, that's about $25,000 there. However, with Action Air installed and built the system per the spec, it's not Action Air's fault if there's an issue. So, you know, one of the things we're learning is that that system was built as designed. So as we move further with the four rooms in the Gallup Hill School, we will, we may see some additional costs to put in some extra dampers or something like that. But if you look at the bottom line of this document, you'll see that the, we're at 97.2%. $104,000 in retainage, and although it says $679,000 left to finish, about $450,000 of that is in CM contingency. So that'll give you an idea where that project stands. So with that discussion, and I'll be glad to let you guys answer any questions you have with ONG, I move that we approve the AI application thirty-three Gallup Hill School in the amount of $287,640 and, I think, eighty-six cents. Yes, eighty-six cents.
Second, Pete.
On the agenda, on the agenda, there's two different numbers there. The, it should be eighty-six cents. When you click on the link, it doesn't show the eighty-six cents, but it's there.
Yeah.
So moves on the floor.
I'll second that.
Uh, sounded like Jerry Tominski seconded that. So with that, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and aye. Steve just with aye.
Jerry.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tepama Herb, aye.
Bob Gerber, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it. That invoice is approved. The next item is application number thirty-three for the Lead Year Middle School in the amount of $203,103.88. Again, the copy emailed has Steve June's signature under the architect. The rest of the invoice is in order. If you scroll down there, you'll see the, again, the balance to finish, the retainage for each of the trades. You will see there that you get to the bottom line, we are at 97.7% complete. But keep in mind that that does include about $600,000 of CM contingency and some retainage held of about $116,000. So if you've been out to the schools lately, you'll see that the grounds are are pretty close to where we want them to be and being closed out. The site work is pretty much done. We're closing out the last minute thing. So this is in order, and I move that we approve payment.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, application number thirty-three in the amount of $203,103.88. Signify by saying your name and aye. Steve just with aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tepama Herb, aye.
Bob Gerber, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, and that invoice is in fact approved. All right, back to the agenda. Okay, that's the last things we have to pay, but I want to have just a quick discussion here now. I'll start out with the architect in this case, Steve June, if you have anything to add on where we stand. And one thing I'd like you to comment on, have we had a final punch from BSC on the site work?
Right now, I'm spending probably about an hour of each week on both projects total. I was out at Gallup Hill last Monday with Wayne, Mike, and the fire marshal just reviewing the safe room. Just answering any questions. I am in contact with BSC. I will, my understanding is you were looking for them to get out there?
I just wanted to know whether we punched the, I know that the landscape work had not been final punched. So Wayne, trying to make sure you know.
No, we still have some issues with the grass and some items.
Okay, that that particular is the the only concern I have for there. Steve, do you have anything else that's pending through you guys?
No, nothing else.
Okay, understand. Turn over to ONG at this point here. Mike, you or Dan, go first.
Mike, your, your mic's not on.
Oh.
Thank you, Wayne.
So I'll just add a couple of notes before I turn it over to Mike. This is Dan Hudson speaking.
Okay.
So taking the reins now from Mike on the, on wrapping up the punch list. Just a quick note on the site work punch list. I did go over to LMS with with Wayne, and he identified the plantings that had failed. So there's, there's a couple of items still remaining at the LMS site work punch list. At Gallup Hill, I went over there last Thursday and wop with Gerber. I have an updated list to produce. They have seven or eight items left on their list. And then to Steve June's comment, at that point, I'll republish the list and request a formal review with BSC so that we can, you know, truly memorialize all the plantings and how they came out this summer. With that, I'm still entrenched with the financial closeouts. Just one note of, just for context here, is that the COR 210R1 that was issued for Gallup Hill supersedes the COR 210 that we approved at the June 22nd meeting. I had made a, an error and taken $900 away from the trade that they that they wanted back. So that supersedes the one issued and approved at the last meeting. Other than that, I've gone through the punch list that Mike's developed, and now we'll meet with Wayne to to a final agreement on items that are on that list that will be wrapped up in the next, hopefully, 30 days, as indicated with our discussion with Steve today.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I have, myself. So to just hit some highlights. As Wayne pointed out, we met with the fire marshal down there at Gallup Hill because we had to tweak a couple of things in the in the safe room assembly with regards to the the strobes, the horn and strobes. So we got the fire marshal's approval to move them around, mop them on the ceiling, and keep them out of harm's way, so to speak. So that work is going. I would expect those safe rooms to be wrapped up within the next couple of weeks. The contractor doing the special wall, cladding, if you will, was supposed to be there today. I didn't get a chance to verify that yet. So the commissioning list, I got it updated from Walker last week. That list for both projects has gone out to all the, all the, excuse me, all the trades. There's not too many items left on that list. The training is ongoing for both schools with Action Air. So those things are getting wound down, so to speak. So we're, we're trying to hit to the finish line here and wrapping up all these miscellaneous items, if you will. That's about it.
All right, well, thank you, Mike, and again, thank you for your service on these projects, and I hope, I wish you the best moving forward. So we'll just dump everything on Dan, and we'll make a lot of comments like, hey, well, Mike Brennan promised us this, or Mike Brennan promised us that, and that'll carry us for a while.
There you go.
That's, that's usually how it works.
All right, no problem. Wayne, as far as the school project at Gallup Hill and Lead Year, I do want to bring up something real quick. We did have a discussion, Wayne, you and I. Turns out for the committee that there are two light poles in the parking lot of Gale Spurry School that were somehow, the power to them was removed during the construction phase, and no power was ever returned to them. I guess there was oversight in the plan. How we got there doesn't really matter, but we do have to get power back to those lights. So Wayne, it, you know, since they're on the side, for the information for the committee, they're on the the north side of the Gale Spurry parking lot, to the left and to the right of the concession stand at Crandall Field. Is that correct there, Wayne?
Yes, on the same side as Crandall Field, one on each side of that building.
Right, so it makes sense that we would just power them somehow from the Crandall Field concession stand, provided there's adequate power there. If they're LED lights, that shouldn't be too much, correct?
Right, and I've got to call into the rec department to see if they'll allow that and, you know, see if we can do that.
All right, in the event that the rec department gives you a hard time about that, my suggestion is that we, A, bring it to the mayor's attention, but in the interim, we can let them know that parking in the school park, if they don't want to power those lights in the parking lot, which are predominantly lit at night for football games on Crandall Field, because school is during the day, we can point out to them that they just can't park in the parking lot if they don't want to play nights within the town.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be too much of a problem, being Scott's pretty good, and we've worked out, you know, power for the the shed at, or the garage at Gallup Hill from their field. So I'm not expecting a problem, but, you know, I don't want to say yes until I've talked to them.
Yeah, I mean, we, considering we redid the gate, repaved on the other side, gave them all new parking lots around the field, I think the least they could do is power some lights. So hopefully, we'll get that taken care of moving forward. One of the things that really jerks my chain sometimes is when the town departments don't play well together. Because when I ran out my, I had my tax bill in front of me for my cars, and I'm getting ready to write a check to the Lead Year Tax Collector for the, you know, for the cost for these vehicles that I get the privilege of owning in this town. And I like to think that when I don't write individual taxes to departments, so I think the departments can play better together. And Lisa, you can put that in the minutes if you want. I don't care. All right, so moving on, the.
And I'll second that while we're at it.
Wayne, do you have anything else to add on the school project?
The Mason was in Thursday. The foundation for the monument sign is pretty well finished. If not, if it didn't get it finished up tonight, it'll be back in the morning to finish that up, so that'll be ready for Mike or Dan to take over and get the upper section done. We already discussed the floor. Mike mentioned that the training is ongoing, so we're good there. The noise issue in 318, that was the one where it was excessive noise at the middle school. Whatever they did, they apparently took the return air and split it into two two applications instead of the one large one. That seemed to solve the problem. I was in there today. It, the noise seemed, issue no longer seemed to exist in that room. So that's a good sign. So that means that they they should be able to do the same type of thing with the other couple of rooms that are running off that unit there. That should take care of that. We still have a temp issue with the guidance office, those two offices downstairs in the corner of the guidance office. So we're still working on those. That's pretty much it for the middle school. We did come up with a couple of things on the, when we were in training today, but Mike jumped right on those, so I'm not too worried about them. On Gallup Hill, again, we're starting to see a lot of problems with cooling in the building. The exact same issues we had back in the late summer and fall before it got cold and we shut the chillers down. So I'm getting a lot of complaints about the building not coming down the temperature of the main office and other areas. We already talked about the safe rooms. There's still an issue with the volume on the projectors in the cafeteria and the gym. Ad Tech is pushing that back to ONG, saying it's in the PA system. It's not on their end. So I don't know if Mike's got a chance to look into that yet.
No, I had reached out to, I did put a call with the Augustino. We played telephone tag, and that was into customs, so it's on the list, Wayne, so.
Okay, yeah, no problem. That's pretty much all I have. You know, we're going to go over to punch list and, you know, we'll get that more refined.
What I'd like to do, Wayne, is after you've had your first run through the punch list with ONG, and if we can coordinate this with the guy who comes out and looks at the gym floor in the middle school, I'd like to be there for that meeting when we go through that list with ONG, the school. And so we're all in agreement on each item on there, how that's being handled moving forward, with the goal of still being able to close out this project by mid-August, so.
Okay.
And and my, my, my goal would be that even though it's a monthly application for payment, that we would, if the middle of August, we're ready, we close out, we submit the final invoicing then, and we move forward. So we'll see what that stands.
Okay.
Okay, with that, is there anything else on the Lead Year School Improvement Project before we move on to asbestos? Or track and field, rather. All right, so with that, Mike Brennan, thank you for your time and your work on this project. Steve June, you and Dan, you can stay on if you like. If not, feel free to sign off. We're moving on to the track and field.
I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
A pleasure doing business. Thank you again.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, room number number eight, item one. This is application number six from HI Stone. And the pictures, by the way, Wayne, that you've been sending off, it looks like drone pictures to me.
Yes, they're from the field, guys.
Yep, they've been coming out real, real nice, and I'll tell you, I'm very, very impressed with the, you know, how good it looks on the field, and I've gotten nothing but good comments from everybody that's seen it. This is application number six from HI Stone. It's been notarized, signed by the architect, certified the amount of $1,038,500. This is application number six from HI Stone. It's been notarized, signed by the architect, certified the amount of one million, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and fourteen cents, if I read that right. Um, and it is in, again, this is, uh, our progress payments for the, uh, track and field project. It's in order, dated thirty June, twenty-twenty. Um, and with that, uh, I move that we accept the invoice and make payment.
Second feedback, McIntyre.
Okay, second by Mr. McIntyre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I. Steve just with a I.
Feedback McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tepama Herb, aye.
Bob Guerilla, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, and the motion is approved, uh, for the payment. Uh, just one quick comment on the, uh, on the field there. Uh, one thing that, uh, we talked about our last meeting was paying for the, uh, the light, uh, test to ensure that our lights are correct. And one of the things that Wayne did pass on is that the lights are only a tiny bit out of optimum adjustment. Um, and in the event we go up there to change a bulb, we know what to do to just tweak them a little bit. Um, so we don't need to bring anyone out to do any work until, uh, we have to replace any bulbs. That's good to hear. Alright, uh, so moving on, next we have the Castle Booze. This is their recurring invoice, uh, payments for construction administration. As we continue on, this is the amount of six thousand dollars. Uh, invoice one-nine-zero-one-six-point-zero-zero-eight, dated thirty June, twenty-twenty, in order, makes sense. Uh, and we are at six thousand dollars. So with that, I move that we accept Castle Booze's invoice or pay it.
Second feedback, McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying aye. Steve just with a I.
Feedback McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tepama Herb, aye.
Bob Guerilla, aye.
Okay, with that, the ayes have it, motion is approved. Excellent. Alright, uh, before I move on to the high school asbestos project, something I meant to mention earlier on the school project, uh, that punch list meeting that, uh, I want to come and attend along with Wayne, if, uh, any one or two members of the committee, not to exceed four, so we don't have a meeting, are interested in attending the punch list meeting, please send me an email, and I'll make sure you get an invite. If more than two people want to attend, uh, we'll, we'll work it out over the phone. Alright, um, moving on, we've got the, uh, high school asbestos removal project. Uh, Wayne, do you want to give a quick rundown on what we found with how much piping there was and what's going on down there with the, uh, the stuff that they took, the non-asbestos and asbestos and all the insulation down there?
Yeah, um, basically, they were measuring every single pipe in the, um, in the tunnels. Uh, and they were saying that they all need to be insulated. Uh, there was also a significant amount of the heating pipe, which had, uh, pre-existing fiberglass insulation, which they were just supposed to clean and then, um, and not remove. Um, so basically, I, actually, just before I, uh, left today around quarter after four, I got an email from them that the cost to insulate everything would be an additional eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars, which I don't think is necessary. Um, um, I think we go with the original forty-two hundred, and then if I have to, you know, we can continue to insulate more as we, as we go along. Um, you know, that, that's where we stand on that. Um, you have a payment application in front of you that came in from them. Uh, I did go into the tunnels Thursday, uh, at least one initially with the asbestos contractor, and I was not pleased with what I found. Um, they had billed us an additional six thousand dollars in their bid to clean up, um, material that was inside the door to the boiler room in the tunnels, which was, you know, all pipe fittings and, you know, a whole bunch of other stuff that had just gotten contaminated, because that's where unused stuff happened to be dumped over the years. Um, that wasn't removed. Um, it didn't appear that they had removed or cleaned any of the dirt or dust that was on the floors of the tunnels. Looks like they just put plastic over it and then removed the piping. Um, there was also debris on some of the, um, fiberglass that was supposed to remain. Um, so I did contact Mystic Air. Um, was a little disappointed the fact that they had signed off on this and supposedly inspected it. Um, but at this point, they're going to come back tomorrow and continue some more asbestos work, uh, removal. And I'm going to ask Mystic Air to take samples of the, uh, dirt or whatever that's in the, uh, on the floor of the tunnel to see if they actually did clean it, or we saw asbestos in that. By state regulation, they should continue to test that until they find, uh, soil without one percent, um, asbestos containing or less. That's all I have on it.
Uh, Wayne, is Hasbro aware that you're not happy with the work?
Yes, yeah, Hasbro, yes.
Okay, so I guess the question I have for you is, so you're recommending that we don't make payment on this until you, uh, get resolution and some answers back from Mystic Air, correct?
Correct.
Alright, uh, this was just sent to us dated twenty-six June. Uh, actually, it was signed on, yeah, six-twenty-three by the arch, uh, it says architect, but it's Mystic Air. Uh, so, uh, so you're recommending no payment at this point, correct?
That's correct. I, you know, I think there's a significant amount of work there that still has to be done that they failed to do. And I did go back to the contract and, or the bid specifications, and according to bid specifications, they, they should have done that work.
Alright, so they're billing us for work that you feel is not complete?
Correct.
Alright, so with that, uh, then, uh, we will just table this item and not vote on it. Alright, is there any questions for Wayne on this item? Hey, if there are none, uh, Wayne, in the, uh, in the event they get all this cleaned up and everything's, uh, ripcord and ready, we will pay it at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and by then, they may be done with the entire project.
Yes, that's possible.
Alright, so with that, our next meeting is on the third of August. Is that correct, uh, Lisa?
Uh, yes, it is.
Alright, uh, so. Alright, hey, uh, Lisa, have you figured out how we changed the, uh, website for PNBC to not show, uh, John Pettaplace and Damian Allen anymore as members?
Oh, to be honest with you, I forgot all about it, because I was, I was home at the time, so I'm back to work now.
Alright, yeah, no problem. Send, send a note to, uh, Regina, see what we can do there. Alright, so with that, is there anything from the committee that we need to resolve tonight? If not, we will get, uh, done, uh, ten minutes before six. Alright, with that, I move we adjourn.
Second feedback, McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre. Anyone opposed? Okay, if not, we're adjourned. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Night.
Bye.